Thank you Lord for the power in your word to instruct and transform lives. As we go into our study tonight, we ask that you give us wisdom and insight into your word. Open our ears and the eyes of our understanding. Speak to us Holy Spirit and help us to be doers and not just hearers of your word. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen. Our topic today is Moses Returns to Egypt. Moses Returns to Egypt. In our last lesson, we saw how God called Moses and gave him the assignment of going to Pharaoh in Egypt and asking him to let his people go. And we saw how Moses tried to avoid the assignment by giving five flimsy excuses. The first one is, "Who am I?" That is, "I feel inadequate." "I feel unqualified." The second excuse, "What if they ask me for your name? I don't even know your name." The third excuse, "They will not believe me or listen to me." The fourth, "I am not eloquent." And the fifth, "Send someone else," which is a way of saying to God, "I'm not willing." At this point, God became angry with him for he was telling God, "Let somebody else do it." But God was patient with him. Just as God had tried, had had answers for the first four earlier objections, he had a solution for the fifth one too. "I am asking your brother Aaron to come and meet you. He will be your spokesman. I will be with your mouth and with his mouth." We also can make God mad at us by our flimsy excuses when he calls us to work for him or when we are called to work for him. But we must remember, as I said last week, God is not so much interested in our ability as he is in our availability. When we make ourselves available to God, God uses us and he will keep us. Now, the topic for today. We're going to start reading from chapter 4, verse 18. Chapter 4 of Exodus, beginning from verse 18. "So Moses returned to Jethro, his father-in-law, and said to him, 'Please let me go and return to my brethren who are in Egypt and see whether they are still alive.' And Jethro said to Moses, 'Go in peace.' Now the Lord said to Moses in Midian, 'Go, return to Egypt; for all the men who sought your life are dead.' Then Moses took his wife and his sons and set them on a donkey, and he returned to the land of Egypt. And Moses took the rod of God in his hand. And the Lord said to Moses, 'When you go back to Egypt, see that you do all those wonders before Pharaoh, which I have put in your hand; but I will harden his heart, so that he will not let the people go. Then you shall say to Pharaoh, 'Thus shepherds the Lord; Israel is my son, my firstborn; so I say to you, let my son go, that he may serve me; but if you refuse to let him go, indeed I will kill your son, your firstborn.' And it came to pass on the way, at the encampment, that the Lord met him and sought to kill him. Then Zipporah took a sharp stone and cut off the foreskin of our sons and cast it at Moses' feet, and said, 'Surely you are a husband of blood to me?' So he let him go. Then she said, 'You are a husband of blood, because of the circumcision.' And the Lord said to Aaron, 'Go into the wilderness to meet Moses.' So he went and met him on the mountain of God and kissed him. So Moses told Aaron all the words of the Lord, who had sent him, and all the signs which he had commanded him. Then Moses and Aaron went and gathered together all the elders of the children of Israel. And Aaron spoke all the words which the Lord had spoken to Moses. Then he did the signs on the sight of the people; so the people believed. And when they heard that the Lord had visited the children of Israel and that he had looked on their affliction, then they bowed their heads and worshiped. Moses went to Jethro, his father-in-law, to get his permission to return to Egypt, and Jethro granted his permission. Furthermore, the Lord assured Moses that all who were after his life were dead. He instructed Moses to perform all these wonders before Pharaoh and added that he would harden Pharaoh's heart, such that he would not allow the children of Israel to go. Pharaoh was not only the king of Israel, of Egypt, he was a symbol for all of God's enemies. He represented all who resisted God. So when God said, "I will harden Pharaoh's heart," do these words mean that God would confirm what Pharaoh had already stubbornly determined to do? This is because in some passages we are about to read later, we have told that Pharaoh hardened his own heart. However, in our next study, we shall be discussing in greater detail the hardening of Pharaoh's heart. Suffice it to say now that God says that he raised up Pharaoh for the purpose of demonstrating his power. In Exodus, chapter 4, verses 24 to 26, we read about God meeting Pharaoh and his family on the way and wanting to kill Moses. Why? Apparently Moses had failed to circumcise his son as God's covenant with Abraham required. Was this because his Midianite wife had opposed circumcision? And did Moses agree to please her? We don't know. But Moses could not effectively serve as a deliverer of God's people until he had fulfilled the conditions of God's covenant, one of which is circumcision. Zipporah quickly intervened by circumcising their son with a sharp stone, thus complying with God's command. Circumcision was a sign of purification and open identification with God and God's people. The Lord told Aaron to go and meet Moses in the wilderness. Moses and Aaron met in the desert. And Moses told Aaron everything the Lord had told him. The two brothers then appeared before the elders of Israel and spoke God's words to them and did the signs in preparation for their appearance before Pharaoh. Just as God had promised, the elders were convinced that the Lord had sent Aaron and Moses. They appreciated God for his deep concern for them and bowed down and worshiped. They believed that God had heard their cry and was ready to deliver them. But things did not work out the way Moses and the children of Israel had expected. Moses and Aaron went to Pharaoh, the powerful ruler of the most powerful kingdom on the earth at that time, and demanded he let the people go as the Lord had commanded. But Pharaoh did not agree to let the Israelis go. He did the opposite. He scorned God. He scolded and dismissed Moses and Aaron. Even worse still, he increased the burdens of the people and made their life so bitter that they forgot God and turned against Moses. Humbled before Pharaoh and rejected by his people, Moses cried out to God, "Why?" Moses asked. "Why, Lord, have you brought troubles upon these people? Why have you sent me?" God renewed his promises and assured Moses that Pharaoh would let the people go. In verse 1 of chapter 6 of Exodus, the Lord said unto Moses, "Now you will see what I will do to Pharaoh; when he feels the force of my strong hand, he will let the people go." In fact, he will force them to leave his land. Chapters 7 to 10 of Exodus shows how God demonstrated his power by afflicting the people of Egypt with different plagues, even though he promised to harden Pharaoh's heart and his heart remained hardened. That is a brief summary of our study today. Now let's go to more details. Let's read Exodus, chapter 5. Exodus, chapter 5. "Afterward Moses and Aaron went in and told Pharaoh, 'Thus saith the Lord, God of Israel, 'Let my people go, that they may hold a feast to me in the wilderness.'" And Pharaoh said, "Who is the Lord, that I should obey his voice to let Israel go? I do not know the Lord; nor will I let Israel go.'" So they said, "The God of the Hebrews has met with us. Please let us go three days' journey into the desert and sacrifice to the Lord our God, lest he fall upon us with pestilence or with the sword." Then the king of Egypt said to them, "Moses and Aaron, why do you take the people from their work? Get back to your labor." And Pharaoh said, "Look, the people of the land are many now, and you may make them rest from their labor." So the same day, Pharaoh commanded the taskmasters of the people and their officers, saying, "You shall no longer give the people straw to make brick as before. Let them go and gather bricks for themselves, and you shall lay on them the quota of bricks which they made before. You shall not reduce it, for they are idle. Therefore they cried out, saying, 'Let us go and sacrifice to our God. Let more work be laid on the men, that they may labor in it, and let them not regard false words.'" And the taskmasters of the people and their officers went out and spoke to the people, saying, "Thus saith Pharaoh, I will not give you straw. Go, get yourself straw where you can find it; yet none of your work will be reduced." So the people were scattered abroad throughout all the land of Egypt to gather stubble instead of straw. And the taskmasters forced them to hurry, saying, "Fulfill your work, your daily quota, as when there was straw." Also, the officers of the children of Israel, whom Pharaoh's taskmasters had set over them, were beaten and were asked, "Why have you not fulfilled your task in making brick both yesterday and today as before?" Then the officers of the children of Israel came and cried out to Pharaoh, saying, "Why are you dealing thus with your servants? There is no straw given to your servants; and they say to us, 'Make brick,' and indeed your servants are beaten; but the fault is in your own people." But he said, "You are idle, idle! Therefore you say, 'Let us go and sacrifice to the Lord. Therefore go now and work, for no straw shall be given you; yet you shall deliver the quota of bricks.'" And the officers of the children of Israel saw that they were in trouble. After it was said, "You shall not reduce any bricks from their daily quota," excuse me. Then as they came out from Pharaoh, they met Moses and Aaron, who stood there. Excuse me. Then Moses said to God, "Indeed, when I came to the children of Israel," I'm sorry, that's the wrong thing. Pardon, beg your pardon. It's verse 21, verse 21 of chapter 5. "And they said to them, 'Let the Lord look on you and judge, because you have made us abhorrent in the sight of Pharaoh and in the sight of his servants, to put a sword in their hand to kill us.'" So Moses returned to the Lord and said, "Lord, why have you brought trouble on these people? Why is it you have sent me? For since I came to Pharaoh to speak in your name, it has done evil to these people; neither have you delivered your people at all." The message to Pharaoh was clear. "Let my people go." The passage starts thus, "Thus shepherds the Lord," according to King James's version. And this is what the Lord, the God of Israel, says according to New Living Translation. "Thus shepherds the Lord." This is how the prophets of Israel began most of their messages. These words set the messages apart from any mere human plan or desire. The words came from the omnipotent God and had God's power. It's the same when we teach the Bible today or when we read the Bible. The Bible is God's word, the highest authority that there can possibly be. It is powerful. Hebrews 4:12 and it will not return to God empty according to Isaiah 55, verse 11. God's message to Pharaoh was a command, an order. Pharaoh's reply was arrogant and negative. "Who is the Lord, that I should obey him and let Israel go? I do not know the Lord; and I will not let Israel go." Pharaoh considered himself to be a god. The Egyptian name for Pharaoh means the perfect god with a small g. He was believed to be the human form of the sun god. Moses and Aaron, Moses and Aaron's first meeting with Pharaoh was unsuccessful. In fact, it was an apparent disaster. Pharaoh did not let the people go. Instead, he increased their labor. They were no longer supplied with straw to make bricks. They were to find a straw themselves. The Israelis remained. The Israelis four men were beaten. The lives of the people were worse than they had been before. The people even cursed Moses. They blamed Moses and Aaron for their plight. If indeed the Lord wanted to deliver them, why would he allow Pharaoh and his men to add to their burden or suffer it? Moses did the only sensible thing. He cried unto the Lord, "Why?" he asked. "Why, Lord, have you brought trouble upon these people? Is this why you sent me?" Moses either ignored or forgot what God had told him about Pharaoh, Pharaoh's response. Exodus 3:19. In Exodus 3:19, God told Moses, "And I'm sure that the king of Egypt will not let you go; no, not by a mighty hand." And also in Exodus 4:21, the Lord said to Moses, "When you arrive back in Egypt, go to Pharaoh and perform all the miracles I have empowered you to do; but I will harden his heart, so he will refuse to let the people go." Moses was disappointed and discouraged because obeying God seemed to bring trouble rather than immediate success. Remember Paul and Silas? It was the Holy Spirit that led them to Macedonia, only for them to be arrested, beaten, put in jail. Acts 16. However, something good did come out of it for it led to the salvation of the jailer and his household as well as several other people. We God's people must remember that God's word says "We must through much tribulation enter into the kingdom of God." Acts 14:22. Excuse me. They strengthened their believers. They encouraged them to continue in faith, reminding them that they must suffer many hardships to enter the kingdom of God. You can put down the following passages also, talking about the same thing. John 16:33. John 16:33, "In the world we have tribulation; but be of good cheer; I have overcome the world." 1 Thessalonians 3:3 1 Thessalonians 3:3 and 2 Timothy 3:12. 2 Timothy 3:12. Moses expressed to God another cause of his frustration and disappointment. "You have not delivered your people," he said to God. As far as he was concerned, God's promise to rescue his people seemed more unlikely than ever because the situation was becoming worse rather than better. Through these discouraging circumstances, God wanted to teach Moses, his people, and us, for several of us have found ourselves in Moses' position before, that often before he sends his miracles there will be troubles and difficulties that appear to make the situation hopeless. Through times of disappointment, we believers must have faith in God's word and continue to trust him to work out his plans in his own time. Romans 8:28. Romans 8:28. And we know, we know that God causes everything to work together for the good of those who love God and who are called according to his purposes for them. Now let's go to chapter 6 and I'm going to read the first eight verses. The first eight verses of chapter 6. "Then the Lord said to Moses, 'Now you shall see what I will do to Pharaoh; for with a strong hand he will let them go, and with a strong hand he will drive them out of his land.'" And God spoke to Moses and said to him, "I am the Lord. I appear to Abraham, to Isaac, and to Jacob as God Almighty; but by my name, Lord, I was not known to them. I have also established my covenant with them to give them the land of Canaan, the land of their pilgrimage, in which they were strangers; and I have also heard the groaning of the children of Israel, whom the Egyptians keep in bondage; and I have remembered my covenant. Therefore say to the children of Israel, 'I am the Lord. I will bring you out from under the burdens of the Egyptians. I will rescue you from their bondage; and I will redeem you with an outstretched arm and with great judgments. I will take you as my people; and I will be your God. Then you shall know that I am the Lord, your God, who brought you out of under the burdens of the Egyptians; and I will bring you into the land which I swore to give Abraham, Isaac, and Jacob. I will give it to you as a heritage. I am the Lord.'" So in these eight verses, we find God's promises renewed. The first thing that God tells Moses here is, "Pharaoh would let the The first thing that God tells Moses here is Pharaoh would let the people go. Just because Pharaoh had not yet let the Israelites go. Did not mean that he would not eventually let them go. Wait and see what I am going to do with Pharaoh, God said. Because of my mighty hand, he will let the people go. Pharaoh's hardened heart provided the opportunity to demonstrate the superior power. Of Yahweh, the true God, over all the false gods of Egypt. God's promise was enough. He had promised to deliver the people. In God's own time, the Israelites will be free. I am the Lord, Yahweh, Jehovah. To the patriarchs, he was known as El Shaddai, God Almighty. Now God was sending Moses back to the people of Israel. To let them know that he is the Lord. The sentence, I am the Lord, appears three times in verses six to eight. God Almighty is a name that emphasizes his power to fulfill anything he has promised. That he was all-powerful, and that nothing was impossible for him. In Genesis, chapter seventeen, verse one. God speaking to Abraham said the same thing. I am God Almighty. The name Yahweh or Jehovah is God's covenant ne- keeping name. God's covenant-keeping name, which focuses on how he rescues his people. And brings them back into a personal relationship with him. God also says, I have not forgotten my covenant with your forefathers. To give them the land of Canaan. God promised to multiply Abraham's descendants and bring them to Canaan, which will become their land. Verse five repeats God's concern for the children of Israel, as they groaned in their slavery. He heard their groaning and was aware of his covenant. In verses six to eight. Verses two, six to eight, which I will want to just read again for emphasis. We see God's promise and command. Verse six. Therefore, say to the children of Israel, I am the Lord. I will bring you out from under the burdens of the Egyptians. I will rescue you from their, your order ba- bondage. I will redeem you with an outstretched arm. And with great judgment, I will take you out as my people. And I will be your God. Who brings you out from under the burdens of the Egyptians. And I will bring you into a land which I swore to Abraham. Isaac and Jacob. And I will give it to you as a heritage. I am the Lord. God told Moses that fro- that he was going to set them free. The people free from their slavery and deliver them with an outstretched arm. Just as God set the Israelites free from slavery in Egypt. Our Lord Jesus Christ redeems us, his people, from the terrible bondage and power of sin. The Egyptians were going to become his unique people. His special people, his very own possession. And he will be their God. And they will know that he is the Lord. The final section of God's message repeated a promise God first made to Abraham. The Lord would not only deliver the people from Egypt. But also bring them out into the land of Canaan, as he had promised to Abraham. I want to read verses nine to twelve, and that's where we will stop today. Nine to twelve of chapter six. God is just speaking. Good, okay, ah, he has just finished speaking to Moses. So Moses spoke thus to the children of Israel, but they did not heed Moses. And because of anguish of spirit and cruel bondage, they did not heed him. And the Lord spoke to Moses, saying, go in, tell Pharaoh, king of Egypt. To let the children of Israel go out of his land. And Moses spoke before the Lord, saying, the children of Israel have not heeded me. How then shall Pharaoh heed me? For I am of uncircumcised lips. Let's say something about discouragement and doubt. Discouragement and doubt. How did the people respond to God and his gracious promises? When Moses delivered God's message, the Israelites did not listen. They were too downcast by their slavery. To pay attention to the greatest news of their lives. How well do we listen to God and godly advice? When we are facing discouragement, disappointment, or failure? God does not ask us to ignore our problems and difficulties. No, he asks us to look beyond them to him, God, and trust him. God asked Moses to go to Pharaoh a second time, but he objected. But his objection did not carry any weight with God. He commanded him to go. Repeated that he will be with him. And that Pharaoh would eventually let the people go. We have a few things we can learn from our study of today. One, God wants Moses and us to know that he remains God. And will do what he has promised to do, no matter what we may be thinking. And even when we don't understand what's going on. He just wants us to trust him. Two, God sometimes uses the circumstances in our lives. To bring us to the end of ourselves, so that we can turn to him. As the only one who can help us. This was what God was teaching Moses and us, when he asked God. Why have you done this to these people? When things went from bad to worse for the children of Israel. Three, discouragement is a tool. That Satan uses to stop us from accomplishing our goals. It is left for us to remain undoubted and decide to press on. Remember the adage, if at first you don't succeed, try, try, try again. And while you are trying again, you continue to draw your strength from God. And finally, the fact that you belong to God does not exempt you from suffering. But God is faithful, and will surely deliver you. And fulfill his promises concerning your life. We should pray that God will give us the grace to wait patiently. And continue to put our trust in him while the suffering lasts. Let us pray. Dear Heavenly Father. Thank you for reminding us in our study today, that you are the Almighty God. That you will do what you have promised to do. And that you will do it your own way, whether we understand it or not. Father, when things don't go the way we expect. Help us to understand that your ways are not our ways. Neither are your thoughts our thoughts. Give us the grace not to be discouraged, but to keep on trusting. That no matter what happens, you will work things out for our good in the end. We give you all the glory. In Jesus's name we pray, amen. Join us next week, where we shall be studying how God got Pharaoh's attention. Please read Exodus, chapter seven to ten.